I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Montague County Board of Education. Today is October fourteenth at five P M. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. First up, we have delegations. And I'll read our standard rules. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comments, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you are about to say, we urge you to consult your legal advisor. Montague County Schools Board Policy zero one six nine, Public Participation at Board Meeting states that you may speak no more than five minutes if there are twelve or fewer delegations. After twelve delegations, the amount of time you may speak will be determined by taking the number of delegations and dividing it by sixty minutes. Public comment is a time for open dialogue among the board members and the speaker. The board members were not answered questions posed to them from a speaker or a comment on a speaker's concerns. In short, there will be no verbal interaction from the board members during or after the speaker's comments. Okay, first up, we have Howard Burns.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to talk to you about an issue affecting the families of middle and high schoolers on Stewart's Run. We moved on to Stewart's Run years ago, and when we did, we looked into whether there was, the road was a bus route. This was a big factor in deciding to buy our home. Stewart's Run has had transportation since before we moved there for three, pre-K through twelve. All our neighbors' kids have been afforded the ability to ride a bus to school until they graduated. Years after the last neighbor graduated, a new family moved in next door, and again a bus was sent for them until they moved well into their high school years. When we first moved in, having no children or parents yet, the county transportation department got in touch with us to see if they could turn in our driveway while picking up the neighbors, and of course, we agreed. Fast forward to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and our neighbor down the road suffered a family loss, which led to the addition of a high school student in their own home, in their home. When they registered him for school and asked for transportation services, they were told it was too late in the year to change the route, but they could not, but they could drive him a mile and a half to the closest stop they were willing to, the closest stop they were willing to make, and they would resume pickups at their house the next year. Here we are in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and our daughter has moved on to middle school. And I go to see what time my daughter's bus will be picking her up, just like it has all through elementary school the last six years. At our home on Stewart's, at our home on Stewart's Run, and our house isn't on the Westwood bus route, but it is still listed on Mylan Parks. I attempted to call the bus garage over the next two weeks to correct this mistake and get the bus stop time. I got no answer or callback, but had heard from a family down the road that they were, again, not sending a bus, a high school bus or a middle school bus down Stewart's Run, even though they had told them they would. So I sent Mr. Lunt Hart an email explaining our concerns about the proposed bus changes on Stewart's Run. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but Stewart's Run is a dirt road off a little Indian Creek, which is a pretty busy road with no sidewalks or streetlights. Very unsafe for our students to traverse, especially in the early morning hours. One student living two miles away from the new bus stop. On eight fourteen, we finally got a letter from Mr. Lunt Hart that said continuing to provide transportation to the students on Stewart's Run would take too much time and delay later bus runs at local elementary schools. I assume that since they didn't move our children for the elementary route to the middle school route, they were forgotten, and this was the result. We then found out from our daughter that the bus arrives at Westwood so early that they have to sit in, on the bus and wait for the doors to open so they can go in. Couldn't that time be used to continue, continue down our road and pick up the students on Stewart's Run? Now we have a bus stop in some random field two miles away from our homes, which won't be able to accommodate the growing number of students that will need to be picked up at this stop next year. And as the winter months approach, is there, there is also the question of who maintains this field in case of snow and ice so that cars can even enter and park there. Title one twenty-six, series ninety-two, School Bus Transportation Regulations, Section three point five. All students living greater than two miles from their assigned school or nearest bus route are eligible for school transportation services. Section eleven point six says bus stops should be located to minimize students walking along roadways. Eleven point seven, bus stops should be located to minimize the need for students to cross the highway. The current stop doesn't meet any of these requirements, in our opinion. That two minute, that two mile walk is the same as, same distance as walking from here to Dellslow. It's also the same as walking to the laundromat on Brockway just before you cross into downtown. Google Maps lists that walk time between thirty-one and forty-five minutes for our children. We request that the board direct the transportation department to reinstate, reinstate the bus route on Stewart's Run for the middle and high school children that live on this road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And I will say, I failed to say that earlier, but I'll just make a note if you, you're okay, but I was just meaning, when you get down to thirty seconds, I may, you were paying attention, so I wasn't concerned about you, but if you start to get ahead sometimes, I'll say you got thirty seconds left, so I just want to put that out there. Next, we have Rebecca Aranda.
Righty, where you guys are. I'm Becca Aranda, and I've been before you guys before to talk about the crowdfunding policy. I'm very excited to see it on the agenda today, and I want to say thank you. I appreciate your work on this. I appreciate those of you who have paid attention and returned phone calls and been engaged in this process. I really appreciate that, and I also want to speak on behalf of our whole group of PTO members that have been badgering you all on this for, it seems like forever now, but I know many of them wanted to be here today but couldn't because we all have PTO meetings and school events and cross-country meets, and if I'm not here when you're discussing it, it's because I'm going to a soccer game tonight. So we are all paying attention, though, and we are really excited to hopefully be continuing our fund runs in the near future. I did want to just add that while I appreciate the changes that have been proposed to this policy, I do have one concern, and that's really that when PTOs or whoever requests to use a crowdfunding site, the proposed policy basically says that the superintendent can, must approve it, which is great. I think that's fine, but I do have some concern that, you know, there should be some conversation. If somebody gets turned down for one of these, like, what is their recourse? I know you guys kind of briefly touched on that before, and the answer, I think, was like, well, they can come, complain before the board, but there's not really a, a policy in place, according to this, to where there is a next step. And I don't think it's anything specific to the superintendent or even this board, but I think that it's good to have checks and balances, and it's good to have an ability to move forward if there is a disagreement and have that written. And I'm, I know we've also talked about, like, you don't want to get too in the weeds, and you don't want to make your policy too, like, miniscule that then you're, you're following all these rules, but I think that having something clear and concise in place right on the front end while you have this policy open and you're working on it is a great way to satisfy all our needs and to, to have a good policy in place moving forward. So those are my comments, and thank you again for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lydia White.
My name is Lydia White, and I'm sharing the following thoughts for my husband, Josh White, because he's not allowed to be physically present at this meeting due to a misunderstanding that occurred two weeks ago. What follows are his thoughts. Hello, Mon County Board of Education members and Dr. Campbell. My name is Josh White, and I'm a former high school teacher and coach, current professional math tutor, and Morgantown resident of fifteen years. I have two special needs children that currently attend Mountain View Elementary School. Kyle, ten, who is nonverbal, has cerebral palsy with impaired mobility and severe intellectual disabilities, and Parker, five, who is diagnosed with autism. I'm currently banned from all Mon County Schools properties, and am seeking you to take a fresh look at this situation and reconsider this ban. Since my time right now is limited, I would encourage you to also review the letters that my wife delivered to the board office for each of you last week on Thursday, October ninth, which have much greater detail in them. On December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, after, at after-school pickup, my son Kyle and I were almost hit by another parent after we were forced to park on the side of Richard Drive. This parent then stopped his vehicle, got out, and began cursing at and threatening me after I took a picture of his car. This behavior was reported to the principal, Mrs. Dickerson, that night, but the only action that was ever taken was a remind message emphasizing the parent drop-off and pickup policies, despite the same parent trying to start a second confrontation with me the following day. During March and April of twenty twenty-five, parents of disabled children were frequently forced to park along Richard Drive. The safety concern remained unresolved despite numerous emails, so I approached Mrs. Dickerson on April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, after a meeting, to speak privately with her. During this brief three-minute conversation, there was no swearing, derogatory language, personal insults, yelling, or intimidating language used. My wife even chimed in, saying, it's gotten really bad. However, Mrs. Dickerson refused to engage or even acknowledge our concerns. Thus, I was surprised when I was informed via letter that was banned from entering Mountain View Elementary School. I believe the description of our interaction in the letter is inaccurate, and I can provide audio documentation as confirmation. The only potential solution to these concerns was a suggestion from Adam Hankins on a March twenty twenty-five phone call, that we move our pickup location to the complete, complete opposite end of the school at the handicapped parking spaces in front of the fifth-grade building. However, this policy was implemented for the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six school year for all parents of disabled children, and the same safety concern still exists. When all the handicapped spots are taken, parents must then park along the sidewalk and load or unload their children in the middle of a road. Thus, school buses and/or vehicles from the employee parking lot driving on this road still pose a safety concern. On September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, there was a misunderstanding regarding the retrieval of some of Kyle's essential items that were mistakenly not sent home with him at dismissal. I went to get the items from the door outside the special education classroom, Ms. Muley's room, as we had done repeatedly over the past seven and a half years. To get Ms. Muley's attention as she was walking away from the door, I banged on it three times. I have since apologized to Mrs. Dickerson for banging on the door. However, at no point did I enter the school building or try to gain access to the building and always remained on the sidewalk outside the building. Thus, I was confused to see my actions incorrectly described as such in another letter dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, which informed me of a ban from all Mon County Schools properties. I do not feel I should be banned for simply voicing concerns about unresolved safety issues and wanting to retrieve the essential items for one of my children. I'm hopeful that we can reach a resolution which will allow me to fully participate in my children's school experience in Mountain View while at the same time maintaining the safety of the school environment. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Josh White.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Okay. Oops, lost one. My mouse disappeared. There we go. Next up is the Reports, Discussion, Follow-Up. I'll let the superintendent do the introductions.
Okay, yeah, first, tonight, we have with us Anchor Management Group and Tarquet Sports. I'll let them introduce themselves when they come to the mic, and they are here to discuss a project with the Board of Education, and you'll also notice that this item will be on your agenda later for approval, should the board decide that that is the direction that they want, want to go. It's on there as a discussion slash approval, and I would encourage you at the conclusion of their presentation this evening, please ask any questions that you have about the project, the contract, and this is a little bit different for us, and we've had the opportunity to sit down and, and discuss with them, hence the movement forward on their presentation this evening. We certainly want them to be able to paint the, the same picture they painted for the administration here as well. So, fellas, I'm going to turn things over to you.
The reason he's asking that is so that when they're done, we can let them go, so we don't hold them around for the second go around because they got a ways to drive.
They do. They have quite a trip this evening, so we appreciate him taking time to, to join the board this evening, and, fellas, take it away.
Great, thanks. Thanks for having us. My name's Mike Ruffo. I'm president of Anchor Management Group and Tarquet Sports Construction. We have, I have Kyle with me, who is Field Turf Construction, and Connor, who is Field Turf Sales. Tarquet Sports Construction is part of the Tarquet family, so Tarquet Sports owns Tarquet Sports Construction, Anchor Management, so Tarquet Sports Construction is everything horizontal. Anchor Management Group is everything vertical. Field Turf is our synthetic turf manufacturing and installing. Classic Court is our tennis court division. We also have Tarquet Design, which is civil engineering. That's all in-house engineers that work actually for Tarquet. Ampere is our architectural arm. Again, any vertical buildings, the architectural piece is done in-house as well. And then Renner, Classic, and Zano are, are other portions of the company, but it's pretty important, I just wanted to explain the family. We're all one family, all owned by Tarquet Sports, and we all work together, so, so we're a one-stop shop. A lot of our, over the years, a lot of design-build, you would hear design-build, and, and companies would go out and they would get a designer, and they would get an architect, and they'd put them together, and they, they'd get the contractor, and they'd package it all up, they'd mark it all up, they'd put a bow on it, and they'd resell it. So there's markup on top of markup. We felt that serving our customer by bringing it all in-house was a better model, number one, from a financial standpoint, but from a sole-source responsibility standpoint as well. So we're designing it, both civil, we're designing it architectural, and we're building it. We're insured all under one umbrella, ten million dollar liability, and then we also have design and pollution insurance all under one, so if there's ever a problem with anything, it's one-stop shop. If you have a problem with anything on-site that you need repaired, you're not, there's no finger pointing at who designed it and who built it, it's all us. It also eliminates change orders, quite, quite honestly, because we're designing it and we're building it. If we miss it, we own it. So when we commit to a project, it's ours. You know, probably two billion dollars plus over the last ten years or so between the families of, what do you, there you go. Also, you know, this is an important piece. We believe Field Turf is our manufacturing and installation. I know you have experience with them. Buying and tracks manufacture and installation is in our family. Again, and then there's hardwood floors, and we go inside, we have hardwood flooring, we manufacture and install. We also have multipurpose flooring and stuff. We're all, Tarquet Sports is part of the Tarquet family, which is, this carpet is probably Tarquet, three and a half billion dollar company, international company, so our, our financial strength is, is really strong. But again, limiting markups, we manufacture, we install, we build, we design, it's all under one roof. So our process, we, we are a little different than our competition, and, and the reason we are, in design-build, often, schools and, and parks and wrecks and things, we're getting into situations where they would get into a design-build without actually knowing what they were buying. So, you know, there was no storm, no stormwater management design, because you can't have stormwater management design until you've done the testing on-site and understand what the soil characteristics are and, and what the infiltration will be, and then the stormwaters built around that. Also, you know, there, there's so many- and then the stormwater is built around that. Also, you know, there, there's so many variables, and this project is, is really, needs this, because it's, we're not sure exactly what you want. You're not sure of the cost of the pieces. And our understanding is it may be phased. So, what we don't want to do is go build a field, or build tennis courts, or build a plaza that then goes and gets destroyed later, or that is not, is not situated right to add on. So, so, you know, if you have baseball and softball and a little plaza, we want to make sure that plaza serves tennis courts in the future and stuff. So, the design would be all-encompassing, and then we would phase the project. Our, our process doing that, visioning, you know, sitting with you, understanding the project in, in, from 30,000 feet, from there, we take it and gather information from the end-users, from, somebody said "students" earlier. You ask a fifth grader a question, you get an honest answer, right? If, if you are so willing, we do focus groups with different age groups that'll be using it, because we think it's really, really productive at the end of the day. And then, from there, we, we, you know, obviously athletics would be involved and, and administration would be involved. We program it, we come up with some concepts, we sit down, and you'll see, I have a couple of concepts, and I'll explain a little bit more why it's so important. But then from that, that, those concepts, we put budgets on it. And when we put budgets on it, we come up with a spreadsheet that'll look something like this, which lists the different portions of the project. So, you know, you want a dugout, right? And on the baseball field, well, we can build a $50,000 dugout, we can build a $600,000 dugout. And we want to understand what the school's needs are, what your financial appetite is, the size of it, you know, typically softball will be a little smaller than, than baseball will be because of the numbers of, of kids on it. Of late, some schools like to build the same site, all those kinds of things, you know. The type of fence, the quality of fence. Do we do asphalt walkways, or do we do concrete walkways? They all have cost implications. So, our process outlines that. So, you might have, you know, pavers, concrete, asphalt, three different numbers up on the list. We talk about it collaboratively and, and a transparent process, and that helps us put this all together. Once we do that, we come up with the packages for each area. If it's a phased project, we'll come back and we'll put, we'll take it to another step and take big packages, say Phase 1 is X, Phase 2 is Y, and, and Phase 3 is Z. So, we're, we're trying to, to put information in front of you to, to make sure we've got it right, number one, but to make sure that it's a collaborative approach, so at the end of the day, expectations are met, are met. So, what we don't want to do, and, and we found in the past with our, that we had to compete against, is a dugout, for instance. They would get a prefabricated dugout that's, that's, you know, $25,000, and that's included. When they're ready to open the fields, that people show up, and they're like, "What is this?" You know, "We thought we were getting a masonry dugout." So, this is all open, upfront, we talk about it, we price the different options, and you guys make the decision. Now, this is just a quick example. Same field, three different buildings in the top of the screen there. They, they weren't sure what they could afford, because they were putting a whole package together. We did a million-dollar indoor, is the bottom right one without walls. It was like a million and a half with walls above, and then the one off to the left at the top is a real building, $6 million, heated, air-conditioned, plumbing, and so on. So, different options for you to, to, to look, look at, you know, the approach. Your proj, project, I took, don't get locked in on what you see here. I just, I did a couple of options. Here's one. Baseball is oriented perfectly here. Softball is not quite, and when I say perfectly, oriented perfectly with the sun. So, the, the angle of the sun, and, you know, if you, if you held your hand like a wide, home plate should be in the, in the crotch of your hand, and, and to go in north. So, it's like 2:00, 1:30 is perfect. Softball is not so perfect, but what this does is, gives you a little better plaza area. Maybe you build one press box that serves both fields, all of which is part of the discussion. Not to slight the young ladies, we thought, "Let's take another look." And, and I understand, there's a hill at the top and, and so on. This is just, just to show the different approaches. We probably looked at 10 of these options. To be honest, I just picked two of them to, so I could kind of explain what we're doing here. Tennis slides down. Again, there's, there's an area in, where the bottom four tennis courts are, that is a mound out there. We don't, that's why on the, on the one before, I show the tennis courts up. That area right below those tennis courts, there's something happening there, we don't know what it is. As part of the feasibility study, we'll figure that out, whether we have to do some borings or, or excavation or whatever, figure it out. If it's rock, it's going to be expensive to remove and so on. But we want to understand that before we give you a budget and then go put a shovel in the ground and say, "We need another $300,000 to get that rock out of the way." That'll all be part of the feasibility and understanding with the process, I mean, what, what we're dealing with. So, here, here's a pretty good example, taking something from nothing. This was a cinder track. They, they had a softball field in the bottom right, baseball in the top of, of the, of the deal, top of the plan. They know they needed, they're a big track school. They know they needed an eight-lane track. They know they needed the building, if you see it in the bottom right corner there, they needed locker rooms, they needed restrooms and such. They knew they needed 2,000 seats of bleachers. They know they needed turf on the main field. They didn't have to, and they, they needed 280 parking spaces. They were their needs. They knew they had to have those. We built the budget accordingly. We, then we took baseball, and we put pricing on turf, we put pricing on grass seed, we put pricing on sod and with sprinkler irrigation, gave them the three numbers. They started evaluating that against another parking lot the other end. You can't say it, but there's a hundred car parking lot that they need for big games. So, with the pieces and understanding it, they evaluated with real-time costs what this project was going to look like. They, 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 we went back and forth, we get it to a budget that we were going to work within, and we go into the full design portion of it, which is design, engineering, and permitting to get it shovel-ready. So, the, at the end of feasibility, the contract, I'll talk about that in a second, is three pieces, feasibility, design and engineering, which includes permitting to get it shovel-ready, and then the construction phase of it. So, I'll just rip through here real quick. You know, some other things, things that we'll look at, and you may say, "Don't want it, don't need it," right, right away. But we want to ask those questions. Do we need an entranceway? Do we, oops. That wasn't supposed to happen.
Uh-oh, you went into the abyss.
My time, my time was up. I'm talking as quick as I can.
You said quickly, that was quickly.
I'm talking as quick as I can.
Theresa will fix it.
There we go. So, so, you know, again, some, something that was part of a school that we did, they were getting a little pushback, because it was all athletics, you know, "What can we do to include something for the rest of the school?" Amphitheater, it's got some speaker and loudspeaker system there that they use for performances. The drama club gets to use it. The, and then it seconds as bleachers. In the, in the top right, you'll see the bleachers at center field, bleachers, but also seconds for outdoor classroom. So, there's things like that we'll talk about. Again, they may not apply here, but I think they're really important to talk about during the programming process. There, that's the amphitheater. It actually turned, it even more, more, they had a donor stand, step up and, and gave a, a big gift, and it became Memorial Plaza for fallen military and fallen firefighters and, and police that had actually graduated from the school. So, just a pretty neat piece of it. It's, we feel those little things are really important when we're designing. Baseball field. The reason I put this here, you know, I, I'd said earlier dugouts, right? I mean... So, so, you know, here's sunken, this school wanted sunken dugouts, they wanted a, a, a college-type feel. Very expensive, to be perfectly honest. We, but what we'll do is go through, we had a presentation earlier today where they wanted, they wanted the sunken dugouts, and we went through a process where we're, gave them three different versions of dugouts. So, they, they're not making this blindly. We're not designing it and coming back and saying, "This is a half a million dollars." They know it before we go and spend the money in design and engineering. So... Some local Tarquet projects?
Yeah, yeah, locally, I, obviously, we have Westwood, some other, other local references. We've done four fields at WVIEW the past, the past two years, so we're very proud of that. Dodgerge County Schools, Ritchie County Schools. We are the official turf supplier of the West Virginia SSAC, so we are very much in the state of West Virginia, have a lot of great references, and we're, we're very, very proud of that, in fact.
Last, you know, lo, local project partners, not that these are, are the project partners, but we'd like to, to point out, we're, we're a local contractor. We bring in local partners. A lot of the dirt work and, and asphalt work and things like that, we bid out. The electric will bid out on your behalf and so on. We like to use local qualified talent. So, so we're, we're really, really conscious about working with people that are within the community. We also, with high schools, often, if they're interested, we'll do a co-op. If this is a summer project, we'll, we'll offer a co-op for three or four students that, that will then learn a little bit about what it is. And college isn't for everyone, so, so, you know, gives them a little, a little view. We're, we offer that, and they're willing to, to work with the district for that. So, I'll, I'll, real quick, just want to touch on, on the contract. I had mentioned that. Contract's a little different than you're probably used to seeing. It's broken into three phases, a feasibility study, and that feasibility study allows us to do that, the earth borings and infiltration testing. Because if I were to come in here and tell you, you know, "I can build you a softball field or a baseball field for a number, and I haven't done those tests," I, I'm not giving you an honest answer, because I don't know what it's going to take from a stormwater management standpoint until I know the infiltration and I can do a high-level design. So, that feasibility, what happens, we do the testing, and then we come out with a magnitude budget. So, we say it's $4 million, or it's $8 million, whatever it is, it's a magnitude. After that is vetted and nothing moves forward until you tell us that you're good to go in the design and engineering, at that point, we have a target conceptual budget, we have a target concept program, and we go into full design, engineering, and approvals. At the end of that design, engineering, and approvals, we have a, what's called a guaranteed maximum price, where we're guaranteeing the price is X. If it comes in cheaper because of whatever reason, that money's 100% to school districts. We were set, we've got our fee set, and at that point, the risk goes from the school onto us. So, before we're approved to move to construction, we've agreed on the scope 100%. It's been detailed, documented, budgeted, and that risk is put on our shoulders. So, and then, you know, assuming you move forward with construction, we'll, we build it. If you stop after any of the phases, there is no obligation to move forward. So, so I think it's an important piece. I think I said some language that, that we put into our contracts that I believe your solicitor has seen. I think I've hit it all. I mean, transparency and collaborative approach is, is really important. And, and that's not only intern, not only with the school district, but internally. We're, you know, our engineers, designers are in the office with our architects. We all work together when we pull these together.
And one more note, too, in the difference between this project and the Westwood project. This project, we're talking about potential concession stands, concession stands, there's dugouts. There's a lot of scope items, as Mike mentioned, that we can go top level, bottom level, and we can, we can work with you guys to get to the, to the budget that is agreeable to the county. I think that's a, a major difference between this and Westwood. Westwood is an existing track, and then turf in the inside. This, this is a brand-new facility. It doesn't exist yet, and we want to build it the way you guys want to build it, and this is, this is how we see that process going to best.
Okay. And again, it can be phased, right? The design, if you don't have the money for the concession restroom and storage building, we want to make sure it's in the right spot on the plan, so in the future, when you do, you can, it's easy to build. Or if we have to bring utilities to that location, so we don't go back and dig up a parking lot or a field to get them there, all that's really, really important.
I have one question about in-kind work. Like, we have, throughout this project, there's been a lot of companies that said, "Well, we'll help with site prep and all of that." So, do you have any problems working with that side of it?
No, not one bit. As long as they're, they're qualified, it is, right?
I mean, end result would be, you know, that you approve, okay, this is the way we want it done and everything, but...
And, and the one piece I didn't mention, we do put full-time supervision on all our projects for more than one reason. One is warranty. We're warranting this, you know, and then the turf itself is warranted for eight years or 10 years, depending on what turf surface goes. But also, so that contractors are not cutting corners, you know, and, and not the contractors do, but we have full-time supervision on-site all the time. Logistically, it's important. Safety, it's important, and, and making sure it's right is important. So, if there's something in-kind, and, and they, they buy into the plans, we're all about it, absolutely.
Made me think of that when you were talking about getting into stone. And after, in, in this area, if you throw a shovel in, you're going to hit a rock.
Yeah, that, that's why I brought it up, because there's a hump there. It's there for a reason.
But we have contractors around that are used to, you know, they got the chisels and the whole bit, you go after. So, if we did have one volunteer, say, "Okay, we'll take this out and keep the cost down." So, I just want to make sure you're okay with working with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, yep.
I'm sorry, anybody else have any questions?
I was just gonna say, have you had a chance to look at the site? Have you been out there?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been out there many times.
Okay. I mean, on the surface, I know you can't predict what's underneath, but what are some challenges you see?
I think the, if I'm not mistaken, that was graded at one point to, to a certain degree.
When we first did the school.
So, I, I think the challenges I see is, is in this plan now, and this is, this is very preliminary, is, is obviously the drop-off and figuring out where, where Mon County's, what land they own, first off, what we can build without getting into some crazy retaining wall, retainage wall type of situation. I, I don't see the excavation being a huge issue, considering it has been graded already. Now, I think there's always the unknown of soils and rock. You know, that's, that's the world we live in in construction, and, and we're here to kind of help you guys do that. But anything particularly, I, I know, Dr. Campbell, in our last meeting, we talked about traffic flow and stuff like that. Those are things we can, we can look at as well. But I don't see anything particularly challenging as far as access or anything of that nature. I think the layout and the design that Mike and his team are going to do is, is probably more of the challenge for the site, making sure everything fits and makes sense.
Figuring the rock out early, i, if that is rock, that, that just, I'm in the business 46 years, and I see something like that, that's not by accident, it's not...
That's a former mine site, so it's probably, may have some pluses to it, and it may have some minuses to it.
And then understanding the infiltration of those soils, we'll know that early on, where, where, any issues. And, and, you know, we, we draw nice, pretty, pretty arches and stuff when we do this for, for these meetings. But, you know, if, if left field of, of softball was 200 feet instead of 230 feet, right, it's probably acceptable to the coaches, and, and we do it all the time, they don't have to be regular. And, and that evaluates walls and where it sits and its orientation. All those things are things we like to talk to. You know, we want to talk, we don't want to show up with a 200-foot left field and the coach find out the date of the first game, right? We want them to buy in on all of this. So, all that's kind of part of our process.
Gives it character. Gives it character.
It does. Yes, it does.
I didn't see any issues as far as buildings, as far as mine mitigation or anything. I don't think anything there would be heavy enough to worry about mine mitigation, which we did with the original building of the school.
Right, right.
So, I, I mean, unless you, you see something different, then I don't see anything.
Not on the surface, to be honest with you. But again, I think we'll know really, we like to find those out early. We are not, you know, if it's from the ground up and, and there's something missed, a piece of fence is missed or whatever, we own it. We design it, we build it, we own it. So, we're not worried about change orders there at all. We don't like the change orders, that perfectly, we've built our, we've built our reputation on no change. Nobody does, right?
Right.
Well, some contractors do. We don't, because it's, you know, our goal is, is your reference for us next year, right, or, or the year after that. And, and we really take that seriously. So, we want to figure out upfront where the problems are, and, instead of waiting later, you know, and, and, and coming back to you and saying, "Well, we, we look good, right? We're the low bidder, but we, we don't have a, a true scope for you guys." That's what we're trying to avoid.
Very similar, like at Westwood. I mean, it's, I mean, the only changes we had at Westwood were really actually, you know, you guys dictated, like, hey, let's, let's add the lights to that, which made a lot of sense at that time. So, you know, doing that with diligence upfront, you know, obviously, bringing in Mike and his team here is, is really just going to help you just phase everything together and just have it blend, like you mentioned, on how, you know, what's most important first, and then growing into that site, not losing the, the master plan image of that.
then growing into that site, not losing the, the master plan image of that is kind of the whole component that we really want to look at, evaluate and deliver something that's going to work for you guys and allow you to grow into it.
I don't want to admit it because I'm still a tennis player, but we have a version that has 12 pickleball courts in it too, so.
I want to open this up because we have the principal of University High here, Ms. Green. I want to see if she has any questions for you because the end result is you're going to have to make her happy. Do you have any questions, Ms. Green?
It's a good start.
See that smile? Stay smiling, you guys will be good. Anybody else have any? All right. Guess we can let you guys go home.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for having us.
Appreciate it.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have financial statements. Nicole is on deck.
Yes, I am. While we're waiting for her, for Teresa to pull up the PowerPoint, I have two handouts for the board members. We have the function and category and what comprises all of those expenses and then by object code. So later on in the slideshow, we'll have some pie charts that you may want to reference this. And then the other handout that we have will be the excess levy expenditures by levy call. So there is a slide in the PowerPoint, but it's a little hard to see, so we thought we would provide this to everyone.
So you can't bigify it.
All right. The financial statements for year ending June 30th, 2025. So the financial statements are made up of five parts. We have the management discussion and analysis, the government-wide financial statements and the fund financial statements. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the fund financial statements. We only recognize receivables and liabilities received within 60 days of year end. And then we have the notes to the financial statements and required and other information. And then in your executive content is actually the full version of your financial statements. Okay, this slide is our balance sheet for all of our governmental funds as of June 30th, 2025. For the general current expense, which is our operating fund, our total assets were $62.5 million. For the special revenue fund, that is where all of our federal and state funds are held with 7.3 million. The school activity funds, 3 million. Debt service fund, 3.5 million. And our permanent improvement, where all of our capital improvements take place, is 24 million. For the liabilities, the general expense fund was 11.9 million, special revenue fund 1.4 million, the school activity fund 43,000 and permanent improvement 326,000. As we move down and look at the fund balance, the general, general current expense has an unrestricted unassigned fund balance of $8 million. That is what we are required to have. It has to be 5% of our operating revenues or expenses. For the special revenue fund, it's 3.5 million. Our school activity fund, almost $3 million. Debt service, 3.2 million. And then permanent improvement, 23.7 million. Any questions there? All right. Moving on to, can you advance a thank you? Our revenues and expenses and fund balance. Our general current expense, total revenues were 180 million, 783,224 dollars. It was comprised of our property taxes of 87 million, other local sources, which is our pilot and interest income of almost $8 million, our state aid of 84 million, and then other federal sources of 1.2 million dollars. And then you can see, I'm not going to redo all these numbers, but you can see the different line items for the expenditures. Our net change and fund balance for the general expense fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by 1.8 million. For the special revenue fund, it was 1.5 million. School activity fund, 114,000. We did, we still had a little bit of activity in our SARP fund and that was just our summer programming for '24. So all of that nets out to zero and we currently do not have that fund. Debt service fund was 333,000 and permanent improvement fund was $8 million. Now, the general fund did transfer about $9 million into the permanent improvement fund for all of the capital projects that we have slated. We usually keep that amount as a reservation of fund balance because once we move funds into the permanent improvement fund, we are not permitted to move those back. So we usually have those as reservations of fund balance. Any questions there?
On the 8 million pilot, just for the public, they still hold that back from our, what's, what I'm looking for, that's for the students, you know, they give us so much.
The growth money?
Yeah.
We no longer, we do not qualify for that because you have to have, you have, in the last three out of the five years, you have to have grown 50 or more. And we have not met that for several years.
Mr. President, are you asking about the, the pilot money being taken out of the state aid?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, yes. It is still taken out. It used to not be, but now it is.
I, I, I thought you were going that direction.
It's remained about 8 million for a while, hasn't it?
So we get about, I think it's around two, two, I think it's about $2 million that we get. A million of it's usually around the general revenue and then a million is excess levy.
That they gave it, but they took it back to, took it away?
No, yes.
Thanks for asking my question.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. And then this is revenues by sources. 47% of our revenues were state sources. Property taxes, general current, were 24%. And property taxes, excess levy, were 24%. And then this is the expenditures by function for the general fund. 59% of the expenditures were instruction, followed by O and M of facilities, 13%, and student transportation of 9%. And again, the handout shows you what makes up each of those categories. Any questions there?
I just want to make a comment about the, how much percentage of the excess levy? Was it 24?
It was 24.
24%, which means, just pointing out, if that goes away, that's huge junk.
Yes. All right. And then this is the expenditures by object. And 80% of our expenditures are for salary and fringes, followed by supplies of 8% and other purchase services of 5%. And then this screenshot shows you the excess levy expenditures by levy call for fiscal year '25. And the first column shows the different categories of the excess levy. When the excess levy call was presented to the voters in September, this is what was on the levy call. And then the actual column is the actual expenditures for fiscal year '25. And then if the variance is positive, then we have overspent in that line item. And then if it is negative, we have underspent in that line item. Now, one really good thing about our current levy call is there is language in there. If there are any funds remaining at year end, we are able to carry it over and allocate it to one of those 14 categories. And after completing the financial statements, there is carryover in the excess levy. And we are going to be able to fund the summer programming for '26. I know that's a, you know, a priority for the board members, so there will be money to continue that for the summer of '26.
I feel like you buried that, by the way. You buried the lead there.
The problem was, back when we were talking about it, she couldn't make that comment until you're.
No, because we, as we're going through and we're doing the year-end financial statements, we have to wait until we have all of the summer pays processed, all of our accounts payable paid. So we really don't know what our carryover is going to be until these financial statements are completed.
The reason I brought that up is because we got beat up a lot, but there's just, you couldn't give them that answer until, until now.
Yes. So does anyone have any questions on the excess levy expenditures by levy call?
So our, our levy call from four years ago?
So we, it was September of '21 that it was presented in front of the voters. And it would have been those assessed valuations that would have been used to come up with the levy call and the amounts.
So what we didn't spend can be transferred to a different category that's on this list?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great.
And as you can see, our biggest expenditures are, and I put some numbers out to the side, it's our category 1200. And that is where we supplement our professional, professional and service personnel salaries, benefits. That's where we pay for our optical and dental of $2 million, our long-term disability policies of around $250,000, our excess student ratio, elective programs and anyone over formula. And then any contract that exceeds 200 days, because the state aid formula only covers, only reimburses up to 200 days. So anything beyond 200 days is coming out of this as well, as well as supplemental contracts and stipends. So as you can see, $20 million is what was in the levy call and what we spent this past year was 28.1 million dollars.
Is that due to inflation? What is that due to? PIA or what?
It's for, the increase is attributed to, we're now 125 employees over formula, all the pay raises that we have given. Because really, a thousand dollar pay raise when we did this, it was around $2 million. So you have that to account for. And then just the increase and, and then the state salary increased as well. So when the state gives increases, anyone that's over formula, we have to pick that up as well.
Right. Thank you.
But with that said, a lot of ours that are over formula is because of the programs from the excess levy. And we promised the voters when we do this, you need people to do that. So we wind up, we've always been over 100, I think, all the times.
And we also help out with PIA, right?
You mean, so we're only funded.
For what, the employees pay?
Yes, yes. So the employer, yes, yes. So actually for a family policy, it is around, what the employer pays is around $16,000 per year for a family policy. And there's different tiers depending on if it's family with, if it's single, if it's a parent with child or if it's a single person. So I think single is usually, I think it's around $6,000 now per year. So anyone above formula, then we would have to pay for that.
Dental and eye?
Yes, that is funded out of there as well.
Completely?
Yes, except for $1. We have to change, charge $1.
We charge $1. So every employee that takes advantage of, of dental and eye is paid for out of this, with the exception of the $1 that we're required to charge.
Okay, moving on. And then these are the outstanding bonds as of June 30th. And we have our 2019 refunding bond of 20,898. Our last payment will be five of 2023. And then we have two qualified Zon Academy bonds and one will be paid off this year.
I never thought I'd see the QZ, any of them paid off when we started it.
And then our permanent improvement projects that were completed as of June 30th, we had the Excel addition and that was all paid for out of local funds. Our North SBA project, it was SBA and local funding and the first phase of the MHS sewer replacement of 164,500. And then we're going to be very, very busy. Mountain View Connector SBA project currently is going to be around $1.7 million. 887, 919 is our, what we're receiving from the SBA. M-Tex stem addition, 5.4 million. MHS kitchen renovation, 3 million. Westwood middle football field turf was 2 million and that was completed September of '25. And that was all local funding. Our new Suncrest Middle School, it's estimated to be around 34 million, half being matched by the SBA. MHS sewer replacement phase two, the cost is to be determined. And then we are moving forward with the MHS cafeteria phase two, which will be 1.5 million and that's also coming out of local funding. Questions there? And then the financial impacts as we look ahead to fiscal year '26, '27, we're always watching our enrollment numbers. Our state aid funding is contingent on enrollments. We're also keeping an eye on federal funding. Right now, we're okay, but I don't know what it's going to be like next October. And then anything that comes out of the legislature and then of course, the renewal of our excess levy. And that's it.
Can you answer my question? Because my, my question's going to be on the federal.
But, but it's really interesting that only 1% of our general fund comes from federal sources.
So the 1% is only Medicaid reimbursement. So for, in Fund 61, that is where, let me pull it up here and I'll tell you how much we get in federal funding real quick.
Like regarding Head Start and IDEA?
Yeah, so in Fund 61, we receive about 15.7 million dollars in federal funding. That's our title, IDEA, pre, early Head Start, Head Start and of course, child nutrition.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good news, right?
Thank you, yeah, it was fantastic.
Especially the summer programming.
Yep. Board, we do need to approve the 2025 financial statements. I do want to thank Nicole and her business department. I get to watch her labor over this for weeks at a time. And she does a fantastic job, as you all know, putting us in the position that she does. We're lucky to have her to oversee this massive budget.
Yes, indeed.
And so again, we appreciate it. On behalf of the board, thank you, Nicole. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the 2025 financial statements as presented this evening.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Next steps, Nicole, do we need to do anything else with this?
Yeah, I'll just need to get your signature and.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next up, related organizations approval.
Okay, board members, you are required to approve annually the related organizations that work in our schools for our students and our staff. Those have been presented to you in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve those related organizations as presented to you this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, follow-up? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Now the sad part, student expulsions.
Unfortunately, it's been a busy couple of weeks, not in a good way. First, we have student expulsion 1, 25, 2025-26. Superintendent recommends that student 1, 2025-26 be expelled for a period of 170 school days for the violation of possession and/or use of a dangerous weapon.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Next is student 2, 2025-26. Superintendent recommends that that student be expelled for a period of 170 school days. That does include the 10 days of suspension for the violation of battery against the student.
Do I have a motion?
Same moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So the, the 10 days were coexisted with, that's why it's 170 instead of 180?
Yeah, it's, it's a 170-day expulsion, 10 of which have already been served due to the suspension.
Before it came to us.
The 10-day suspension, yes.
Got it, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Next up is, I think, new contracts.
Uh, we got one more, one more suspension, or expulsion, unfortunately.
Yeah, there we go.
This is student three dash two-zero-twenty-five dash twenty-six. Superintendent recommends that student be expelled from school for a period of one-hundred-and-seventy school days, plus the ten days of suspension for the violation of possession and/or use of a deadly weapon.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Sorry, Dan, I gotta head.
No, I, no, I fell asleep at the wheel there. I didn't want to say aye.
Now we have new contracts.
Uh, first is a rate-of-entry agreement that is in the, your executive file content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that agreement as presented to you this evening.
Will entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, what particular property are we talking about?
It's university high school.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Target sports agreement.
Uh, this is in relation to the presentation that you just saw a few minutes ago. The agreement is in your packet this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Tarquet Sports Agreement for University High School.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, follow-ups? This is great to get moving with this one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Thank you, board members.
Consent agenda.
All right, not too big a one this evening.
You didn't use all the alphabet.
I did not, not tonight. Nobody's complaining either, right? Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include: Item A, expenditures exceeding three-thousand dollars. Item B, supplements and transfers. Item C, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item D is the power school agreement. Item E are the minutes of your September twenty-third, two-zero-twenty-five meeting. And finally, item F is the pre-K slash Head Start Health and Safety Corrective Action Plan.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. All right, policy, second reading and adoption.
Yes, we have one this evening that needs to be addressed. That is policy sixty-six-zero-five, crowdfunding. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that policy as presented in your executive content.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
I have a few questions, surprise. You're welcome. Um, I was reading the policy again this afternoon. Well, there's, there's two things. First, I said it before at the first reading, and I'll say it again. I really think that we need to outline an appeal process in this policy. I am concerned about putting it off, because we know that when we put things off, we forget about them, and then we don't worry about them. And it isn't a snipe on the board, or Dr. Campbell, or anything like that. I just like knowing the process. I like knowing if it's rejected, what is the next step? Also, on, in our draft policy, it talks about related policies such as fifty-eight thirty, which is student fundraising. And I wanted to ask for clarification on something that I thought was a little little contradictory between the two policies. Oh, wait, is it the student fundraising one? I'm sorry, it's been a day.
I think it is, you asked about fifty-eight-
Fifty-eight thirty, right?
Fifty-eight thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's student fundraising.
Yeah, so felt like I remembered. Oh, here it is. Student fundraising by approved school organizations may be permitted in school by the principal. Also, here, it's the, it's, it's the last paragraph before the bullet points. All school support organizations must be approved in advance by the principal and the board in order to conduct fundraising activities in the name of a school district, which we just did tonight. In addition, the organization must notify the school principal prior to each fundraising activity being held. So it doesn't say that it needs to be approved by the principal or approved by the superintendent, where in our draft policy, it says, third paragraph, crowdfunding activities aimed at raising funds for a specific classroom or school activity that are not required to provide a free, appropriate public education to any students in the classroom may be permitted, but only with the specific approval of the superintendent. So how do we harmonize these two policies? How do we bring them in line with one another, if we do, if we do pass?
Let's take the first question you had, so I don't get too off-track. Jennifer, remind me, and I should have asked you for this beforehand. I didn't realize that part of the question was coming. But don't we have a policy already in existence that addresses the ability of the public to appeal any policy that is in our policy manual to the Board of Education?
Um, the citizens' appeal process, yes, there is a citizen.
So it is a blanket policy that addresses every policy that we have, should a member of the public disagree with the way a policy was interpreted, the way, I mean, anything related to policies of the Board of Education, that, that policy addresses how citizens can bring that to the board with their concerns.
Yes, yes, this-
So would it apply to the crowdfunding policy and?
I think it applies to any decision of the board, superintendent, but let me look, because I didn't-
And I apologize for not doing that in advance.
What, what number is that?
That's why I said-
Okay, because I'm looking citizen appeal up, and it's not coming up.
I would think anything that goes on in this county, if the citizens are upset with it, we're hit. Because, I mean, the superintendent serves as the employee of the board, and everybody else serves as the superintendent. So whatever happens out there, if it's not appropriate or not approved or whatever, the citizens can come to the board and say, we'd like to have you look at this, and, you know, maybe we check balance, whatever, with the superintendent. So I think the public is protected regardless about this, because we're always here. They can come to us.
No. Granted, putting in appeal is a lot. There's a lot that addresses appeals. It's, um, it's public complaints. It's policy ninety-one thirty. What was the number?
Nine-one-three-zero.
Thank you.
So, I found that too, but it was counting condition, I think.
Look in, in your agenda?
Okay, got it.
Under policies. Public complaints?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think we saw three good examples of it this evening.
Yeah, and it's, it's broad. The policy is broad.
But, I mean, we had three delegations on three different topics, all, all fall under some policy that, that we have adopted as a Board of Education.
Yes, but I also think that we are constrained in how we can address those, right? We cannot address the public when they come before us with a delegation, which means we'd have, one of us would have to suggest putting it on the agenda for two weeks from then. And it just becomes a lengthy process. I personally like codifying things. I like knowing what checks and balances are. I know, as, as a citizen of this county, I like knowing, again, processes. I think that transparency is fantastic. And so, how many times do people come and talk before the board? And, and many times, we either choose not to address it, or we just, it slips our mind. And yes, we are elected officials, but at the same time, it's, it's, I, I think what I'm asking for is a process by which PTOs or other organizations would receive feedback, and transparent feedback, on why something was rejected, so that they can come before the board, and instead of saying, oh, our, you know, our fundraiser was rejected. We don't know why, which then turns into, again, adding stuff to our agenda, coming back in two weeks in, in order to have a discussion. It just becomes bogged down in bureaucratic, bureaucratic baloney, for a better word.
I would interject, we do that now.
I know, I don't like it. It's okay.
Everyone that I sign, if, 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 if there is a reason that it is rejected, the body that requested it is informed as to the reason why it was rejected.
Okay, so-
There's a form they fill out. That form is returned to them, and it is explained to them what, what, what they need to change, or why it was, it violates some form of code. So they're not just left to hang. It's explained to them why, why their request was rejected.
Because you choose to do that, right?
Well, the form is returned. I mean, that's, Teresa brings me the forms, I sign them, or I sign them whether they're rejected or, or approved.
So let's say you win the lottery tomorrow, you decide to retire. And we're sitting here in two weeks with a new superintendent who doesn't do that process, who doesn't give a reason for the rejection, or due to this policy just ignores every delegation that comes up. Right? Because you can come and talk, it doesn't mean that that issue will be addressed.
That is the responsibility of the board to inform the superintendent what their wishes are in relation to that delegation.
Okay, so what about my second point regarding the contradiction between our, our proposed language for sixty-six-zero-five and what is in fifty-eight thirty?
Jennifer, you want to take?
Yeah, you better take.
So on the, the proposed sixty-six of five, it defines what crowdfunding is, as opposed to fifty-eight thirty talks about what student fundraising is. Student fundraising talks about, it's the actual student solicitation, whereas crowdfunding is using an online service or website-based platform. So for student fundraising, and it talks about going through things such as the school support organizations, and it says there that the organization must notify the principal prior to each fundraising activity being held, which is the form that Dr. Campbell's talking about that then comes to him. So then, with the crowdfunding, it's, as you said, says that that's only permitted with the specific approval of the superintendent. But then goes on to say that all crowdfunding activities are subject to this policy and applicable board policies. So that section of the student fundraising is applicable to student fundraising, not necessarily crowdfunding. So the crowdfunding has to follow the policy, that policy itself, which is a little more stringent than, as far as the approval process goes, than the fundraising, but also has to follow the processes and the fundraising policy with regard to the collection of funds and how those are reported.
Okay, so for example, when I was a student a hundred years ago, and I sold candy bars door-to-door to go on a field trip, that would just be, need to be notified to the principal.
The way they notify that is they fill out that form?
Does the principal approve it, or is that Dr. Campbell?
The prin, the principal forwards it on to Dr. Campbell. I know that's not exactly what that policy says, but that's the practice that's been in place, as opposed to the policy. I think even prior to Dr. Campbell, actually.
Okay, maybe we need to, if we adopt this language tonight, we need to go back and revise that, just to, to put them in line with each other. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, follow-ups?
I had heard a lot from the public on this, and, you know, it was a little bit disappointing, and I shared that with them, that we, the, you come to, the opportunity was, we can't have our fun runs, we can't use these services. We turned it into a policy where you can now use those services. And of course, as, as humans, we all want our cake, and we all want to eat it too. I got blasted at one of the schools from a friend. But it, it is in place, and, and it has gotten fixed, and we, we applaud the, the public who came forward and needed it. I do agree, let's keep a pol, let's keep the policies in line. When Dr. Campbell does move to Jamaica after he hits the lottery, there are policies in place. And I think if the form has an area that says, why was it denied, that means it has to be filled out, it should be filled out. It should lead the person to fill it out, and we, as the board, can say, you got to fill that out. So I, I do agree, some kind of, and we'd say appeal, but some kind of process to say, I got denied, who do I talk to? Because we can't just call the board office. We know how hard that is. People are running, people are busy. But a process to say, you know, okay, it, it got denied, this is why, this is what I need to change, is, is always good. And I do, I do, do agree with lining those two up, so.
I would, oh, I'm sorry. I will say that the board has not seen this form, and so it would be nice for us to have access to that one, just to see and know what it's about.
Well, I mean, I've seen it over the years, but obviously, been here long enough.
I was going to say, Mike, we don't all have your ears.
This old-
Typed it up on a typewriter the first time it came out.
I didn't go that far.
But we, we rarely have the deep paths on the funding, and because all of this results from things that have happened in the years past. And you would not believe how creative people can be putting money in their pocket using the school system as a, I'm doing this for my school, or I'm doing this, and next thing you know, the local school treasurer doesn't know anything about it. So Nicole watches it like a hawk, so I'm, we'll make sure we keep her happy.
She'll make sure of that.
Yeah. And the bottom line is, we just got to justify where the money, where it came from, where it went, what it was spent for.
Maybe it's just basic accounting. I don't like the idea of, of feeling like something nefarious is going to happen, because a lot of our, our parents that dedicate hours and hours to PTO and making sure that our students are getting the most opportunities out there, are doing it out of the love of their heart. I don't think that they're looking to siphon or launder money out of the school district. That's not to say that this hasn't happened before, but at the same time, I, I, I don't like that. I don't, I don't like that idea, just because so many people are volunteering so much of their time, so.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that then, as far as, you're reasonable. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Go raise a bunch of money.
Glad we got that out.
Yes. All right, next up, personnel matters.
First is our regular personnel list. I do not have any changes to the regular personnel list. With that said, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the list as presented to you this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussions, follow-up? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries, and we have no new positions, correct?
Uh, you are correct, we do not.
Personnel list addendum.
Um, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter involving discipline.
Okay. We will move to the other room.
Yes.
Oh, we got a vote, yeah.
We had a motion, just needs-
Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. We shall return.
Okay, we're back from executive session where no decisions were made obviously and we were on the let's see, personnel agenda, personnel list addendum.
Yes, we're on the addendum. I do have one change board members if you look at page two line four please change the date there to six thirty twenty twenty six. I think it reads twenty twenty five, but it reads six thirty twenty twenty six. So with that change, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented to you this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Excess levy update.
Yeah, real briefly, exciting. I did meet with Frank Vitale on Friday of last week and I was able to twist his arm and convince him to be at least one chairperson for the excess levy committee. You probably knew this already, I didn't realize he had been an excess levy chair for us in two thousand and six and passed our excess levy at seventy two percent pass rate in two thousand and six. So he's very excited about it, he's very committed to our school system and he was very appreciative of the board asking him to serve in that capacity and I know he will give a hundred percent effort to that. With that said, I am meeting with another member of the community tomorrow, yes, thank you Teresa, meeting tomorrow who has expressed interest in possibly serving as a co-chair with him and again I know that this is an active member in our schools and our community and again would serve in this capacity I think very well and work very well with Frank. So it's taken us a while to nail down those chair positions, but we are ready to do that. At five o'clock this evening, we did contact all of the members that we are going to invite to serve on the excess levy committee. They received a letter inviting them to a meeting on October twenty ninth at the readiness center. We are going to hold that meeting at seven thirty a.m. on that day just to really give an overview to the committee of their role, what the excess levy consists of and just brainstorm a little bit at that. So we are really off and running at this point. We'll still take names, I know a couple of you have been, you know, as you talk to people in the community if they say hey, I want to be on the committee, we are taking all comers, the more the merrier and so please get those names to myself, to Teresa, to Amber and we will make sure that those people are invited as well. So excited to get things up and get things running and nail down some of those leadership roles. Teresa, did I miss anything? Okay.
Okay, next up, board member updates. Anybody have anything?
Got to visit MTEC during their industry day or during professional development day on Monday, so that was a good visit and also got to see a lot of our janitors together in one room, got to speak with them, custodians, very good.
I was sick last week, so I did not get to participate, but it was lovely seeing the parade and the football game and all the activity around UHS's one hundredth anniversary and I know we're all excited to celebrate all year long, so.
With that said, it's a good segue into what I'm going to do here. I really enjoyed the whole festivities and the parade and the game and it was pretty neat seeing, being a nineteen seventy one graduate. I wanted to read the names of the couple of these I had taken in my fifty seven Chevy in the parade in the beginning and then at the game I got to announce them, all that, but I wanted to read their names again, these ones that I have here because I think it's just amazing and we had a ninety nine year old graduate, so anyway, I just want to bring him to the head of the class. First one is Charles Hord, he was class of nineteen fifty nine. Bob and Betty Kelly, no relation, class of nineteen fifty six. Alfred Jones, class of nineteen fifty two. Connie Pally, class of nineteen fifty one. Bruce Spangler, class of nineteen fifty one. Wilma Goodwin, class of nineteen forty nine. Virginia Eisentraut, class of nineteen forty six. And Louis Baracus, class of nineteen forty four. Meaning, he was a year old when the school opened, so. It was just, and those guys were a hoot taken down in the parade route, it was just, it was such a, I just enjoyed it immensely, so anyway, congratulations to all of our graduates from University High in a hundred years, that's pretty impressive.
That's cool.
I wish Ms. Green was here to, so hopefully somebody will tell her I read all these names. Okay, is there anything else? Our next meeting is October twenty eighth at five p.m. Thanks to everybody for coming, we're adjourned.
Thank you, board members.